Say the pledge.
I am not religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for religious fans. We're on a nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments?
Yes. Three in person and we'll have one online as well.
Okay.
The person first is Maureen Bridges.
Okay, Maureen. I'm gonna stand over here. Yeah, three minutes.
I didn't write it down, but my name is Maureen Bridges. I came from the West Side. I'm at Rock Remen Library and our community, this is further away, so I can only represent. We just wanted to express our very teaching interests together. The hope and master plan also, we hope that you will. We love our library and thankful for all of you, the library district, for what you bring to our community, to your library. Rock Remen Library is the center, it's the urban core, it is a safe place, it is the educational center, it is the after hours. It is the Girl Scouts place, it is our Rock Remen, our HOA's meeting place. It is many things to our community and we drop by there all the time. It would be very devastating to lose that library. From that side, which children can walk and bicycle around. And we just care so much and hope that you'll continue to find a way to keep. Our Rock Remen Library where it is, and I went to a recent HOA meeting and there was also discussion that we need to. You know, even amongst our women community, but we appreciate the Ruth Holly community as well, but just we hear us thankful to all of you. It's, it's just in an age where we just came from COVID and life is isolated. The, the library in the Rock Remen Ruth Holly more center, let's say, brought people together. And just in such a positive, good way. We're very grateful and we hope that you continue to. Let's find a way. How do we work with businesses and how do we make the library profitable? So that our Rock Remen Library can say, we want to help you. We've got a huge community on the West Side. How do we help to protect our library? Just be thankful for it. Yes, we just, it's exciting really. So, thank you, thank you.
Next up is Adra Telamante. If you can stand closer to the table because it's this microphone in the middle here and the people that are online or having a hard time there.
No worries. I also printed out what I wrote on your seat tables. I did not print out enough, I'm sorry. Actually, if you want me to go around that way. Thank you so much. And I won't be able to read all of it because it's not within a few minutes. Basically, I'm just saying that I've worked within a mile of the Ruth Holly Library for five years and I can assure you that this library location plays a vital role to the community. This was evident during the COVID shutdown when the library was shuttered in late 2020, don't you? With concern for our students, I co-organized, spent five weeks handing out books during the pre-lunch and pre- meal with Jack Swider Middle School. We hope to keep kids reading to slow down what was to become the most epic summer's plan in education. People that met started to sit closer. It took dedicated teachers and a community of givers to try and meet the literacy needs of what the Ruth Holly Library can offer by simply. Be able to provide access to books. We're unable to fill the needs of digital accesses, access, fulfilling book titles, class, and offering tutoring spaces. And the summer range of community events. If Ruth Holly Library closes its doors again in this time permanently, the community, community will not be able to fill in the gaps like we tried during COVID. This will greatly impact the immediate community. The four closest schools to this library location are all Title I schools. You see the poverty rates listed in the tables below. It's both from the 11's website, District 11. Access to school and classroom libraries as well as digital access ends at the school breaks. These are not families who can afford to supplement their children's education. They need places like a public library where their children can find books to practice reading. As well have, have access to computers to fill out job and extended learning applications. Their parents also benefit from computer access to fill out mental reforms, job and mental applications, and take online classes to improve their job eligibility. There's research that supports higher student test scores by a 0.02 standard deviations in reading. And if the library closes, can you imagine the statistical impact on test scores amongst the four schools nearest? Please reference the table below outlining the distances from these schools to the three closest libraries. Please note. Okay, all right. So there's that table. And then also, closing Ruth Holly would impact tutoring services available to students in the community. There's a table there letting you know the three closest brick and mortar schools as well as their walking distance and public transportation distance. With, while valid questions are being asked as PPLD decides to close, move, or renovate its branches. I think another question should be considered. Which communities would feel the loss of the library more acutely? And then I put some additional resources, which I'm sure you guys are very knowledgeable about, as well as all of my contact information. I'm not sure how I can help keep Ruth Holly open, but I will be hands-on in this process. Thank you for your time. Sitting, I'm needing a straight. Okay, thanks.
Next up is Jacob Ward.
Microphones working, right? Hi, I'm Jacob Ward. Many of y'all know me already. I'm the president of our workers' union here, Pike's Peak Library Workers United. And first off, thank you as always for doing all, thank you too. The decision-making is not easy, especially when it comes to budget and. Closing branches. We want Ruth Holly and Rock Remen to stay open as well, but while balancing the budget, we also need to consider some of the workers' needs. So first off, new associates in 2017 made $17.85 hourly. And in 2024, they make $16.83 at the time of hiring. So adjusted for inflation, that's actually a difference of $5.54 less hourly. For new associates, which requires a bachelor's degree to have. New senior associates are making $6.68 less hourly. Again, a degree required position. Brand supervisors, $5.20 less hourly. New beginning librarians, which requires a master's in library sciences, are making $6.18 less hourly than they were in 2017. New librarians, it's $5.79 less hourly, and senior librarians are making $6.09 less hourly. So not only have recent events caused a number of talented, motivated, and long-term staff to leave our district. But the significant pay decrease for new hires will keep us from competitively attracting talented and qualified workers from joining our district. People pursue master's degrees for these jobs. They require at least a bachelor's to get an associate-level position, which was not a requirement for a time. When the requirement was re-implemented, the pay did not increase with that. There's less and less incentive to stay with or to join PPLD, and staffing sustainability is crashed. Basic industry standards that would improve morale and help workers, like telecommuting to work, have also faded away. So our union represents more than just our frontline workers, though. We are a wall-to-wall union here to support each other and push for changes. There's decision made, like where to move service desks from people who do not work those service locations or know the pitfalls of these changes proposed. And our needs generally just need to be considered and discussed. So we don't want library closures and we need sustainable pay, which is not easy to balance. But, thank you for your time. You can always check out our website, pplwu.org, to see our proposed changes. Contact me. And also, let's discuss our workplace needs together. Thank you for the time.
We have now two comments from online. The first is Joe. Joe, you're up. If you can unmute.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. And to the board, first off, I want to introduce myself. My name is Joe Pelka. I'm the president of the South Face Community Association, which is within a quarter mile away from the Rock Remen Library. I'm representing 233 homes when I speak right now to say that we are very concerned about the potential closing of the Rock Remen Library. I personally have been using the library for almost 30 years and look forward to going there on a regular basis. I have had three, four generations of my family use that library. And it would be a great disappointment to see it go away. I ask that you reconsider some of the issues that have come up and look as to what's best for the community. Especially as to getting back to the basics as to what a library should really do. In addition, I'd like to address a slightly different issue with Rock Remen, and that is the, what appears to me to be a deteriorating level of service at Rock Remen. To my knowledge, right now, we do not have a full-time manager, and I believe we've lost at least one other full-time employee, which I'm not sure if they have been replaced or not. I know the manager has not, at least not recently, because Gigi is serving as both the lead for all libraries as well as the manager for Rock Remen. I've had a little bit of discussion with her, but what came up most recently, where it became very apparent, was back in the end of April. The library stopped getting the Wall Street Journal, which is very important to me. It took three and a half months for that subscription to finally get back. And I'm very appreciative of Gigi for her efforts to get it done. But I think it demonstrates that she is being overtaxed, as the gentleman just mentioned. Some of the personnel issues, gentleman before me, is that Rock Remen is having a deterioration of service due to the lack of employees right now. And what does, what's being done right now is not cutting it. And I can, I can only assume that unless you can convince me otherwise, that. The board and management has already written off Rock Remen and is having their employees go away and not replaced. Now, if you could convince me otherwise, I certainly would like to hear your comments, but that's the impression I have right now. I thank you for your service. I know very much the items you have to go through. Being a president of the association that doesn't get, I don't get paid for a whole lot of work that needs to get done. So from one public servant to the other, thank you very much, and I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, Joe.
And our second public comment is Judy Lilly-Moral. Judy, you can unmute and ask your question.
Hi, I also appreciate your service. I know it's hard to balance all these needs of the community. But I think it's really important to keep the Rock Remen Library open for many reasons. For one thing, I'm a retiree and many of my neighbors are, and we check out books and return books there frequently. I also go there with my, or have gone there with my grandchildren for story hour and met playmates for them there. I know of HOA meetings that meet there as well as other neighborhood groups. I see a lot of kids coming down from Eagleville Middle School after school to stay there. And I think it needs to be a safe place for them too. I hope that you can consider and that we can support you to find ways to keep it open. I would also like to see a timeline so that we know transparently. What, when you're going to decide the fate of Rock Remen and the Ruth Holly branch. Thank you for your time, and that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, nobody else signed up for public comment.
Thank you. We will begin our meeting with reports and I believe. Is he on?
Yeah, he's over there.
Aaron, I believe you're on first with governance.
Yes, we thought that's you.
Oh, generally, I'm sorry, Aaron, let him be there too.
Okay.
I'm on deck. I got you.
Okay. For governance, we did meet. We did some work on the Board Retreat agenda and just getting a draft of that put together. And we discussed the timeline for the Board of Trustees opening. And we reviewed the conflict of interest policy and see if it needed making changes. That's ongoing through September. That's basically.
Really? Thank you. Aaron, did you want to make comments on that or not? No, you weren't. You're in internal affairs. I'm sorry. Okay, internal affairs. That's you, buddy.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We met this month. We had. Actually, quite a long meeting. We had a lot of stuff to talk about. The first thing that we talked about was you pass library opportunities. We had quite the discussion around whether there was an opportunity to try and purchase that space. And if it was really in the best interest of the library to do so. There's no formal communication. Randy had reached out at one point and said, would you be interested in discussion? They said yes, and that was about as far as we made it. And so our team's done a lot of background work trying to get some more information, so we don't. Nowhere near a decision point at this time, but it was really just a conversation about whether. The administration here should continue to pursue that or if we should just pull the plug altogether. At this point, we said. There's no harm in asking. We don't, we're not committed either way. Let's just do some more data finding and then we can, we can go from there. The next item we talked about was the increase in cost at Murray Square. Just the CAM costs, effectively, we haven't been charged a whole lot of that before. And the owner of the building is now saying. He can't continue to sustain the maintenance on the building and the property without charging more. And so. I don't have the percentage in front of me, but it was about a 20% increase annually, if I remember. Or our annual cost went up about 20% because of this CAM charge, something like that.
More like 40.
No, see, I was trying to be an optimist here. See what happens? And so it's one of those that, that this was an unexpected cost that we're being hit with. And so we're gonna have. We. Randy and his team are gonna have to try to figure out how to make that work with the budget that we already proposed, because that was, that was money that was not. Allocated in that, that we got hit with late.
Yes.
Then we talked about personnel policies. And so as, as we've talked about in past board meetings, we're, we're shifting the philosophy of how board policy is done. And so we remember, we turned a lot of the policies that were already written over to the administration and said, you know, we'll. We'll redo kind of what that board policy segment is. And Heather brought up that there are thousands and thousands of personnel policies and administrative policies, all have. Board belief statements at the beginning of them. And we, as a committee, basically said, we don't have time to go through all of that, so. It's yours. It's already administrative policy as it sits. And so we're just turning that over and they can take those, those board blurbs out. Because we'll just capture what we need from a board perspective into the board policy, and then if changes need to happen, it can happen later. And then the last thing we talked about, the Internal Affairs Committee. Was every year we have to do the purchases over $100,000. We do that at the beginning of the year so that when those bills come due. Randy and his team have authorization to pay that. There was one that we got mid-year because there was a change in how, it was less than $100,000 last year. But it was a prorated amount. And so now we're getting the full bill, which is over $100,000. They had to come back for approval, which I believe. Is on the agenda for us to approve tonight, once it passes out of committee. Any questions?
Aaron, I might have missed that, but when does that cost increase for Ruth Holly kick in?
Oh, it's this, it's this year. Yeah.
Wow, okay, thanks.
It was a no notice. Here's a new bill.
Yep.
And six months of catch-up.
Actually, when I sent the updates, I think in June, that was it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Public Affairs.
We did not meet.
Okay, we have Commissioner Geithner. You have any comments?
I don't, I don't have any particular comments, but I do just want to say thank you as always for. Your service on the library board. And I know there's a lot of important conversations going on about those library branches. It's good to hear the public. Commentary on that. I know they are incredibly difficult. Budgetary decisions that, that you all have to make. We're familiar with those at the county as well, and just thank you for your. Diligence in ensuring that, you know, taxpayers are well looked out for.
Thank you. Any trustee comments? Anyone have any? I do have, okay, go ahead, Debbie. Tayana and Scott and I had a meeting with Councilman Dawson. He was interested because the Rock Remen branch is in this district. In hearing more about the facilities master plan and the process that goes on with that. And it was a really good meeting. We were able to clarify with him that, again, that that was a preliminary report from the consultant, that none of us had seen it. Before it flashed onto the screen. And so that it's a long process. His concern was that it was going to happen in the short. Time frame, and he was very pleased to find out that that was not the case, that we already worked on next year's budget that did not include closing anything. And that he would be happy to help spread the word. So I, I told him that we really appreciated his efforts on that. He asked a lot of good questions and. I think he came away with a lot of good information too. So it was a really productive meeting, I think.
About you? Yes, I really thought it was positive, all the questions he asked, and wanting to also expressed his support. For the district in particular, for Rock Remen Library.
Anyone else have a comment? I, I was entrusted to make this, to read this to all of our board. It came out of governance. Scott asked me to read this, so I will. And it is just a reminder for all of us and for something. For the board to consider maybe revising in the future. This is about Article Four, Section 11, about meeting attendance. Meeting attendance in person is preferred. However, at times, in cases of personal illness or other emergencies, participation of a trustee in a board meeting. Of a trustee in a board meeting remotely by telephone or virtually is allowed. With these guidelines, no more than two trustees may participate in a board meeting remotely at any one meeting. And each trustee may only participate in a meeting remotely a maximum of two times in any given calendar year. Unless a special exception is otherwise approved by the majority of the vote. Of the remainder of the board for a specific calendar year or period. The special exception shall automatically terminate upon the end of the approved period. And if necessary, the same process shall be followed for a few, for a new exception to be approved. Trustees are reminded that failure to attend board meetings constitutes good cause for removal as divided in Article Two, Section Eight. And this is just a reminder what's on in our bylaws. And it may be something that we want to revisit and look at in governance and bring before the board for approval. Because so many things have changed. I just wanted to read that to you. Other than that, I have nothing else to say. So friends, come and give us your, all the money you've earned.
I'll say lots of money. And, you know, as we said at the bottom, because we know people love sales, we're going to have a sale all the time going on. In fact, tomorrow from five to seven at East. We finally got back to clear out all these like loose papers, sheet music, lots of sheet music, broken books. I don't know why she was keeping broken books. So we did a direct mailing and specifically advertised to contractors. Because we figured, you know, broken books, they love to do that. So we're hoping to clean out a lot of that.
Sheet music.
Yes, I've looked, I've been down there and looked through it. The other thing is, you know, it's feast for famine. So last, in March, we were looking for boxes of donated books, these short boxes. So we would like to always have 700 boxes of books going into the sale. We already have that, and it's not even September yet. So we're running out of storage space. So I can't believe it, but we're actually. Turning away people.
You're saying I shouldn't bring my pile of books that I've been holding on to for a month for your cleanup?
Your little pile of books. Well, hey, you know, people who drive up.
I almost brought it tonight.
See, I take it. That's what my friends do. They give me, they'll always take books like that. But we're not taking, you know, people who drive up with eight boxes, because half the time we throw away their, their old textbooks that are 10, 15 years old. And so our philosophy is they don't want to throw them away, so they bring them to us. We make up, throw them away. It makes sense. But just look for those sales. There's probably something you want there. Because we want to just be able to give you more and more money.
And right, and we appreciate it very much. The foundation report.
I don't have anything to add, but if y'all have any questions or anything, happy to answer them now.
Remarks on your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, financial report.
Hey, everybody.
I know you have something to say.
Yeah.
What?
So. We are of course looking at the July financials. I did want to point out on the schedule that you were given to look at in the board packet, the, the annual budget numbers are. On the expenses and the bottom line are a little higher than they should be as a negative. And I recognize that. It was too late after I'd sent the package out to get that over to you. So I will have a corrected version of this over to. Laura tonight, so she can update that immediately after the meeting. So as you can see, we are roughly. For the district as a whole, we're at about. 97, wrote that down, about 97, 98% of our overall revenue so far. That's pretty normal. You know, tax collections for the most part happen February, April, and June. And so we've gotten the biggest chunk of our, and again, this is natural. The only thing that'll keep coming in maybe 200,000, 270,000, 300,000 a month is the specialty vehicle. Stuff that we get, because that has nothing to do with property tax bills. And as we sit right now, we're at about $8 million favorable. So I, I've obviously gotten the final audited. Statements, so I did drop in the unassigned fund balance, because that's what you guys can actually spend. And updated that on each one of these funds, the general fund and. Capital fund and, and the self-insurance fund. And so the eight million across the board for, for the district as a whole. Translates into $6 million for the general fund. So these are always a little bit out of sync this time of year, because we've got almost all of our revenue, but of course, we've still got. Five months of expenses and salaries and personnel expenses are about 62% of our overhead. So that big number there will just continue to trickle down to something a little closer to what we budgeted. Expenses for the district are coming in at about 18 versus. A 21 million. And, and again, the 36. Eight number that you're seeing there is for the whole year. And so I'm, I'm trying to basically factor out seven months out of 12. And, and that number looks hugely variable right now, but again, it'll, it'll adjust as we get closer to the year end. I can't even believe I'm saying that word. Because we just finished one. The Capital Projects Fund. Again, we, we've got a lot of projects going, and I believe we still got a lot of stuff hung up in encumbrance. We, as you all know, Gary. Just retired at the end of June and. His interim is home enjoying time with his newborn baby. So things are continuing to move on, but we probably have things in encumbrance and, and so that stuff will. Things are continuing to move on, but we probably have things in encumbrance and, and so that stuff will. Eventually wash out when we um, you know, get the. Work done on the backside. Uh, you'll notice that there, for the budget for the year, because we rolled over um, dollars from last year. We ended up with a minus five twenty. That would be cleared up. Like last year, I had to move dollars over so they could work on things in February with kind of a estimate preliminary number. And then once the final audited numbers come through, then I have to go through and make an adjustment to that, and that just, that hasn't happened. I'm gonna try to get that in the next month, so that number won't look weird like that. And then our self-insurance fund, um. Again, this is, this is coming along nicely as far as um. The revenue from the employees is as expected, the. Um, property taxes just a little bit higher than, than I budgeted for this point in time in the month. And, and again, this is gonna be most of the revenue and. We'll just continue to see about thirty-five thousand dollars a month from employees contributing. And then uh, claims just come in when claims come in. Uh, I, I, I really never know what I'm gonna see like today, uh, when I was looking at the bank this morning, uh, we had a. Uh, charged for a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, I have no idea what it was for, but that's kind of a big number for one day, so um. We'll see.
It's claims and uh, also what happens and we need insurance and this time, certain claims hit us as well, so that's how our rates are determined. Uh, that's uh, when it comes to our health insurance, so that's what we refer again. We do receive those uh, reports, of course, it's confidential, there are no names identified with that. We just receive claims that insurance company, uh, they let us know where we are with that, and it varies, it can be like. No big claims in July, but it might hit us in September or in August, so that's uh, that's how it. Yeah, and, and. Always.
To give everybody a, a little perspective, including employees, you know, a hundred and sixteen today, I, I don't remember if I saw. Any numbers for the last five, six, you know, seven, ten days, so. They are also in their processes, it could have been just one big batch, but.
Yes.
I, I only mention that because it, it, you know, we get some big numbers through there and of course you know it adds up to millions of dollars, so.
That's yeah, again, that's how.
People are using their benefits.
Yes.
Uh, does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Well, welcome to High Pla- Prairie, um. I am excited, you should have seen in your report. That they recently, this summer, installed declining logs out back, so if you get a chance. Please step outside, take a look at those, they were pretty excited, that, that has been a long process getting them and then getting them installed, so. We were happy they got here this summer, um. To that, I also kind of wanted to give you a little update, it was also in the report, we are still doing in the middle of our ILS RFP. And I really want to take this as an opportunity to thank all of the staff, particularly Jenny Pierce and Colleen Medling. For leading that charge, it's a huge undertaking. And it has involved twenty, twenty-five staff members doing the reviews of different areas for that, and so. We are working towards that. And then next month, you, you saw the summer adventure numbers, which are outstanding. But um, programming will be here next month to do a presentation on that as well. But any questions about the public services report?
I do want to say the citizenship uh, naturalization ceremony was awesome. And I didn't expect it to be that large.
Yes, they tell us from the Denver office that they really enjoy coming to ours, because ours is much more of a celebration. Because of all the different community groups that come in as well, so that's always nice to hear, yes.
Anyone have any questions or comments on that?
Good job.
Any um, questions on any of the other reports or comments?
So um, I'm very glad to be back um, to. To the United States and to work after my vacation, and I want to take this opportunity and thank to the board for allowing me the time to visit my family. Uh, but at the same time, um, I promise I did not check my emails like I was directed, but you know, social media is there. So I saw a lot of information about the library district that. I was thinking, I think I'm still in charge, and that misinformation was spread all around. And I'm like, what's happening? I didn't know, um, and that's when I um, messaged and texted. Tell me, is it something I don't know, what's going on? Um, so that was very disappointing to see that, that. As a preliminary facilities master plan was presented to this board and. Nobody had an opportunity even to discuss that. Um, and um, I also want to take this opportunity and thank all of you for taking care of that, getting requests and. Uh, while, uh, while I was visiting my family, and again, that was the shock that. I, I did not expect, so because we're the public library and that's our goal and mission. To always share accurate information, and the people should come to us for that information, so that was. Uh, that was something hard to digest, and even I started doubting myself, is something happening to me that I don't know? I almost texted one of you. I didn't even care about international rates at that point. Uh, so, uh, talking about that, also I wanted to give you the update uh, and thank Jeremiah Walters and. Cindy Sk- uh, Cindy, I need to say last name correctly, yes, uh, for collecting all of this data. So between July fifteenth and August fifteenth, we received hundred and forty-six comments. About Rockford Memorial Library, a few was about Ruth Hall Library as well. This represented forty percent of all of the comments we received during that time. One hundred and thirty-five of them were comment cards that were mailed in or handed to library staff. And eleven came in through the Contact Us page on the website. Also, my figures do not reflect any of the comments that Board of Trustees received. So I just wanted to let you know, we have all of the data again, thank you Jeremiah, and thank you Cindy. For that, um, and I know that she will be uh, introduced uh, later on, but um. Her role will tremendously help us to streamline, to streamline all the comments. And have an idea what's happening in the community, and also I will be actually presenting that overview to all of you as well. So, that's uh, one of that, uh. Another uh, exciting part is that I want to take, uh, thank our uh, staff, especially Jenny Pierce. And uh, Melody Alvarez, Janina, and all your teams for working so diligently and they. We have right now parental controls information for our online platforms such as Overdrive, Pipla. Canopy and Libby, did that cover all of them? So, and um, it also, it will be, it's already on our website, also those flyers. Will be given to our community members' families, so it's the mission of public libraries to provide information and tools. For our parents and guardians, how to monitor their own children's, uh, you know, browsing of. Online or in our building, so thank you, thank you very much. So, that's it, and the other thing that I want to take this opportunity and thank Timothy. Alan and his team, uh, they're putting together very first um. Pike's Peak Library District Job Fair, that will happen on the twenty-eighth of September, I'm saying the right date, right? Uh, so, and also I wanted to give you a little bit of background, so when I gave him a call, I thought I was that smart. That, hey, we need to do this, I'm like, oh yeah, actually, we're working already on that. Great, and then also um, couple years before it, uh, Heather Leslie wanted to implement it in a library system. It did not work out, but now we're doing it, that will be a great opportunity for our community members, come to our. Facilities and to see what we have um, available, so uh, that again, that's uh, we've been. Quite busy and I'm extremely grateful for the two Pike's Peak Library District team. And uh, also, just thinking, do not think I'm that, uh, any elected official since I came back, this was crazy. Uh, we also starting our budget process as an administration. Uh, before I left, I did assign that to Randy and Kim and a leadership team to actually start that process. And um, we did, and then I had this. Pleasure of reviewing our budget uh, without any capital requests. As of now, even now, we don't have any capital projects included that, where we stand. We, I, when I saw we were at forty-one million dollars, so uh, we're working on that and. The deadline to submit our capital project, and as you know, we have a lot of deferred maintenance in our facilities. That is not sustainable, um, and also, as you know, I emailed all of you regarding twenty-one C library. That will be coming to you regarding that RFP that is already released, but again. Uh, since this district, um, we've been deferring facilities maintenance for years and years, it's catching up. And we find ourselves in very difficult situations, especially when I get a call from Randy Green early in the morning. Believe me, that's not a pleasant call, just saying, I like Randy, but I know why he calls. Why is, why am I seeing his name on the phone, right, so that's, that's where we are right now, we are looking at all of that. And uh, our plan, I know that the Board of Trustees' goal for me and ultimately my goal for my team is to deliver the balanced budget. We're working very hard to make it happen, but when we present that budget to the trustees, you will see. Actual needs and then balanced, so then, um, to have that, we believe that numbers. Tell stories, so, and that's our responsibility to you and to the community to tell that story. So, also you see our P- PPLD Strategic Plan Progress Report that. I'm very grateful again to PPLD team, so that, that strategic plan that we developed. I don't know when now, but it seems like centuries ago, um, uh, we, it's not just collecting dust, but we are following it. And providing this report to all of you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I, I have a couple of questions, your job fair that you're planning, is it gonna be in one location or various locations? Because it sounded like various, but I was.
No, it's actually at one location, it will be at twenty-one C Library, since we have uh, that space. And also at East Library, we will be finally doing asphalt. So we won't have that, we will have some accessibility issues there.
Okay, and.
Yes.
Um, the other question I have is. I saw on a, a message that there was water on the parking lot in front of Rockford Memorial. Is that our responsibility, or is that the?
Yes, that's a great question, I knew you would ask this question, so I did ask Heather. To ensure that we had answered today, and I would defer to Scotty and Heather. So, because I know we are working with that uh, management and that, there is a sinkhole in our parking lot at Rockford Memorial, so that's what we are referring to. Oh, you can speak louder, it's up to you.
Yeah, you can come on, it's last for you to come on, let everybody get to know you. That way they can just throw darts at me.
So, yeah, I've, I've been in touch with the property manager at Rockford Memorial, and she's aware of it, and she has an asphalt company, but they came out. Yesterday, and they're supposed to get back in touch with her tomorrow with a plan. I drove over there myself today and took a look at it, and what it is, it's the drain. From the front of the building and it runs under the sidewalk, and then it comes out to a main drain at the back. So what's happened is the, the main pipe itself, it's like it's deteriorated and it's, and it's gone. Or most of it's gone, so all that water is just, it's coming down and it's washing out the asphalt and the dirt and everything else. So, that's kind of where it is right now, so right now, we're looking at, it's about a seven inch hole. And it's about fourteen inches down, so. But soon as I find out.
But it isn't our responsibility to repair it, it's the.
It's their, it's their responsibility, so we, we have to chime in, so.
No, it's the same way what we were dealing with, when you have leased properties, that's a problem, it can be their responsibility, it's their responsibility. Doesn't mean they're going to fix it right away, we've been having those issues at Ruth Hall Library Parking Lot as well. So we've been asking to make those changes, to do work, but uh, it has not happened yet, so that's also, I just want to make sure that. Uh, we have that too.
And, and they've also, speaking of Ruth Holly, over this past weekend, they filled a lot of holes, the pottles and the fronds. They did reach out to me today and let me know that, so.
So I did, I did, it will cost us something eventually, our piece of the pie.
Yes.
To repair that lot will be spread amongst their tenants, and we will have an adjustment probably at the end of the year, because I'm sure this isn't something planned on. But we will, it's, we're not paying the full front of it, but we will get a piece of it like we always do with leased property and.
Yes.
Thank you, no, that's, thank you. Okay, uh, oh, presentations, uh, Jeremiah.
Funny enough, after all that, I didn't stand where I was telling everybody else to stand. Um, so. If you saw the Contact Us page on the website even earlier this year, it's like fifty different things to select and it's confusing the patrons. People were sending multiple messages to multiple people, it was confusing our eye, our in, so we decided to consolidate all that and give people very few options. And route those all through one person in one position. Um, additionally, the contact cards that we receive in person were handed out, you know, given in our branches or mailed in. Handled at a branch level and then sent to me, and they basically just lived in a drawer, which was our archive. Also thought, oh, it'd be great to have a person to handle all of this as well, so uh, community, uh, communications specialist. Position was created in the Office of the Chief Library and CEO, and I'm very excited that we got a great hire for that position, Cindy Skaggs. Who's uh, joining us virtually. Um, Cindy worked for PPLD back in twenty-twelve to twenty-sixteen, uh, both in East Circulation. And she did, then moved on to do adult and teen reference in Library Twenty-One C. Um, she left PPLD to teach composition, literature and creative writing at Pike's Peak State College, she's also a published author. She recently lived in Ireland for about a year and a half, uh, going to school as well there. But I'm very glad that she came back to PPLD, um, good timing for us, maybe not great timing for Cindy is. Once she got this whole system in place for everything to come to her, we got an overwhelming amount of feedback. Of which Tayana reported on before, uh, so her first month, as Tayana said. Um, received a ton, first full month that that system was up, received a ton, forty percent of that again was. For Rockford Memorial, so that basically doubled, doubled Cindy's workload. Um, so, but we were very lucky to have somebody so fantastic in that, in that position to help us handle all that, and. So, part of it is replying to all of those comments, but also we've never s- on that level tracked the type of feedback we're giving, things like that. And Tayana teased that a little bit as well, but quarterly, we'll be doing reports in the board packet. That's just an overview of the types of feedback we're receiving through our website and the comment cards, so you all can get that kind of top level look at that. That'll also be shared with staff and things like that, so. All of that said, please join me in welcoming Cindy Skaggs, and again, she's joining us there, I don't know. Cindy, if you want to say anything?
Uh, mostly I just want to say that I made an intentional choice to come back to the library, I love library people. Um, and this has been a great opportunity for me to observe, um, from the patrons advocating for their library. To those advocating for our employees, to the board and leadership who have fiduciary responsibilities to the people I work with. We're all here because we love books and we love our library, and I choose to surround myself with those people, so I am super glad to be back. Um, and I don't even mind, whoops, I don't even mind, um, all the comment cards, keep them coming, I love it.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, thank you Cindy.
Do you have a question?
I do, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, with her being the communication, is it basically just input from people that she will be keeping? Keeping or she has to do uh communications out larger with the media to sort of help.
Not.
Some disinformation we see or on our social media spots.
Right, not to the media and, and social media and all that, that will still live in the communications office and all of that. So this is if people email us through the contact us page on the website saying. And they have, and most of them, I don't know what percentage Cindy, but I know that. A lot of them are just even circulation questions, I need to renew my card, so a lot of it.
Does she just make sure they get to the right avenue?
Right, or she answers them often, and that's the thing she, it's helps that she worked in circulation for a while. But um but she'll also reach out to people in the library, she doesn't know the answer, but then. Once she gets that answer, she'll know that for the next time, so she's also building up sort of a repository, big F A Q. So that she can more efficiently answer those down the line and then track, well, what are those kind of, a bunch of people are asking for uh whatever the thing is. Then that could be reported and perhaps we could improve our.
And so. Also to streamline and again, like a lot of comments that we were receiving, sometimes they would get lost.
Yeah.
And we didn't know actually what was happening, what kind of feedback we were getting directly from the community. So and at this point also connect those people for with appropriate departments, but at the same time to keep track of that. So then we also understand what are the requests we're getting from the community and it's more centralized and streamlined than look at that and analyze the data. Where are we missing and why we are missing, what we need to work on? Or what is something that actually is positive when we're doing well and let's continue doing it? So uh that's, that's uh, that's an idea.
First more direct.
Right.
Communication than.
Yes.
Overarching.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, good accountability.
Yes, it is.
Uh because I was asked recently, it was about a month ago. Man, how many copies of books do they get? My number is four hundred something on the waiting list for women, the women, which is very popular right now. And I said, well, I don't know how many copies they have, but I'm sure you'll get.
We have a lot, Jenny, yes.
The number one, I was told, the number one old right now in, at P P L D.
It's a good book.
Yeah, yeah. So, and it's good data to have, uh so that we can figure out what we're doing.
Right.
Okay.
I think it's, it's good to collect data from different.
And also, I think when we need to reach out to community, because if you have somebody involved and you can sort of. See that trend of this person continually being involved and.
Yes.
Then it would be nice when we do have issues, we can actually start looking at building these little micro communities.
Yes.
And yeah, you know, I would like to see it be utilized in that way as well.
Right.
Because lots of times we directly reach out, because I don't know about you, but I never watch the news or anything, makes my life much happier, Tiana, it's your child. It's uh, yeah, because you just do see a lot, but sometimes we're always talking out here and we actually need to talk direct. And I think if we could have those kinds of ambassadors and, and communities to give us both feedback on both directions.
Yes.
Uh, thank you Angela, I love that idea of micro community, that's a great idea. Um mobile library services change, changes.
Yes.
Is, there she is.
And I would like also this opportunity to thank Pam uh for her leadership and uh. The changes to make sure that we're sustainable, but also we're serving our community and we're not duplicating. Um services, so thank you very much, um and yes, uh.
Okay, I'm, my name's Pam Contreras, I'm the um interim manager at Mobile Library Services. And I've been with P P L D for ten years in Mobile Library Services. And so I'm just here tonight, so um we did share some changes that we have been undergoing over the last, so plus. I wanna start out with um. Uh I wanna start out with just a brief history of mobile libraries, um. Uh we, they start, what do I do?
Already shared.
Sorry.
Don't worry, I told you I'm not.
Was that me? I was wanting to try that again.
I don't know, I've never seen you do that before and I wasn't touching anything, but I'm not gonna throw you under the bus.
Boy, is that a pain once.
Okay, so in nineteen fifty four, the Colorado Springs area, El Paso County um began. Both began bookmobile services with a donated vehicle, now seventy years later, we are um. In the final stages, I hope, of finalizing our next bookmobile that will be replacing. One of our older vehicles and we're, that's, we're hoping to get that um into the garage by the end of this year. Back in May, our team was, was tasked with reviewing and restructuring the mobile library services. And we broke it down into these four areas, we identified challenges. We, we instilled a restructuring process and then we've been reviewing how it comes and looking forward with future. Some of the challenges we have identified and I do have maps, should I pass these around or, okay? So this, this map is, is a um outlines all of the. Mobile library stops that we had prior to our restructuring in May. The, the kind of red, the red color icons indicate the library districts, not the library districts, the library branches. And so um, so anyways, just an example of the different places and there's a legendary example of the different places that we service, what we noticed. Um as we started identifying challenges was that there was duplications in many. Duplications and overlapping of services, for example, there were three mobile stops in a one city block. And um another, another example was there were several areas where the bookmobile was doing storytimes and then we found out that. This, that location was already being serviced by another library branch, so we, um that was one of our challenges. Our scheduling challenge in this department, there's always inconsistencies. There's all these things that are going to happen, there's a vehicular or two that we're going to break down. Eh or there's, there's, there's severe weather and different things like that, which, which caused the schedule to be inconsistent. So our, our goal is to make the things that can be consistent, consistent to kind of um. Offset that, and so we, so that was one of the challenges we also identified and the staffing, we have an amazing staff. And they're very, they are very um talented and they do their job very well. The, the challenge that we noticed with, with the map with this previous schedule was. The inability for a lot of, I mean, not the inability, but when staff take vacation, when staff are sick. That it's very, it's, it's more difficult to fill their spots because of the, there's not a whole bunch of. Of uh other staff in the library that can step in for that and with the busy schedule, that was, that was a difficulty.
So I wanna make sure the M L stops.
Yes.
The little house and the, look, it's a little kids.
Yeah.
Still have my glasses on. Um if I hold it way over here, I could probably see it. Um, those are actual stops that we're currently having, the blue, the orange, the green, correct?
The blue, the orange and, and the green, yes, are, are, are stops that we had. Are all of the stops and then the, the little gray box with the X in it, those are, those are act, al- also stops that we had.
To be canceled.
Prior, prior to, prior to um.
And when you say community, what kind of stop is that?
It varies, sometimes it's at a park, sometimes it is at a um a clubhouse for a, an H O A.
Okay.
Um so that's a, just a, so they're not, that, those would not be specifically senior facilities or schools, they're kind of.
So when you looked at them, do we get requests, like people coming in and saying, hey, I would like to have one and then do you assess it of? Like, hey, this is a proximity from a library, this is.
You are, you are, you, you, you are, you heard my presentation already. We will, yeah, I'm gonna address that in the next, in the, after this slide, well, actually, no, it is this slide, so, yes, I will.
I promise I did that true slideshow.
So the process that we, what, we, we began by evaluating the stops, we asked questions like. Who comes to this stop, um? How many, you know, how, how long do we stay there, where, where is it and that type of a thing? From, from starting there, we designed a criteria tool. Um that, that encompasses those four arrows underneath proximity, like how, how far it is from other bookmobile stops, how far it is. From, from a li- a library and then used our internal statistics that we take every, every day on how many people are coming, what they're coming for. And uh how we service them, demographics was also one of the um. One of the eyes we put in the criteria matrix with what, of what kind of people are these, are these senior people, are they homebound? Um, are they schools? And um, and then um also alignment, how were these stops aligning with the library's mission and, and vision statements? Throughout the process, we um anticipated concerns that not only patrons would have, but library personnel and. What would have about what we're doing and we're closely with communications to, to um. Come up with some, some talking points as far as, as accurately explaining. Why, why we have been asked to undergo this process and how they could still be able to uh access library services. So the outcome, I've got another map for you.
Okay. I'll wait till I see the.
So um, so the, so we've now, we've now been. We did restructuring the last two weeks in May and then now, now for the last two and a half months, we, this is our current. Our current map of stops that we are servicing and again, the, the red icons are our library branches throughout the whole town. And some of the improvements, so we've been reviewing some of the improvements we've seen. Um the, most of our stops, we are going to now for two hours, how we've seen that in. How we've seen an improvement there has been that we're, we're there for a longer window of time, so it gives, it gives. People better access and more access to the stop. And as a staff, we are able to personalize people's services more because we're, we're there for longer.
And are you actually seeing, I know it's been a short time, so you've got a little more time for that.
Yes.
But are you seeing more community coming out and using the services than previous? Like I, it looks like you clearly had more stops, but if you're making smarter stops.
Right.
Are you seeing an actual outcome, are you seeing people?
And we're, we're still collecting data on, on that and so, and so um. I don't know that I could answer that entirely, just since we've gone and been doing.
Can you make sure you do?
Yes.
If it's an increase, decrease?
Yes, that, that, that is, that is, that is part of our um.
Cause you're in, I'm assuming is to service the community more.
Yes, yes. And so um another improvement that we, that we saw that we actually weren't even thinking about when we started this. Is we have certain, we have some stop, we have many school stops and some of the, the majority of school stops. Don't, we don't service them during the summertime, so we have summertime stops that we swap out, a lot of times this time of year. We're getting ready to remove the summer stops and, and, and put the school stops back in. We were intentional when we, when we did the schedule in May. To place the summer stops exactly where the school starts are going to go, starting on September first, and so it's been. Really easy this year, as far as not, not disruptive to the whole schedule, because a lot of times it has, it's been just disruptive to a lot of the schedule. Because that hasn't, we've, we've kind of, we rearranged the whole schedule in August. So that's been an improvement that we didn't really know about, that we didn't know was gonna happen. The con- consolidation, you know, we've talked about this, we've talked about this already. We started out across the three vehicles that we have in our fleet with seventy nine stops, we now have fifty seven. Which means we have twenty two that we discontinued. But um with the exception of two of those stops that were discontinued because of, because of lack of use. The other twenty have either been consolidated with other bookmobile stops. Or have, or are close enough to a branch that they can utilize the branch and then um. So then our staff has helped, helped direct them to where their closest library services are. Throughout this process, the, our team as a whole has done a very, very, very good job of collaborating. And then we, we're, we're seeing and we're looking forward to seeing more how we can align with the. Will continue to align and intentionally align with the library's mission and mission statements. Future, there's our new bookmobile. And that's what it looks like right now, but we're, but going for, going forward, um we. Are gonna continue using the criteria tool for evaluating um stops um. As, as we can continue going and then with, with um. Expectations to expand and add, add new stops as time goes on and then see how we fit in with the facilities master plan as that is. Is revealed on the direction we're going there. This is our team who collaborated together to, to um. Do the restructure and continues, continues doing amazing work every day. Questions?
And if I may add to this, when it comes to stepping there, also what we found out that very often. Our staff, they didn't have enough time for breaks. Also, and especially you cannot be driving for so many hours and not getting breaks, and so that's what. Pam and her team and Janina, they took into consideration. Literally, they had to take this schedule that we've been using for years and just revamp everything. Um and finding also out that there were so many bookmobile stops like close to our branches. And the purpose of bookmobile is not to be close and close proximity to our branches, but actually to go to the areas we didn't have branches.
And that's where I want the ability to act as people who haven't had it.
Right, well, exactly, so, yeah, so and also that was a change and. We did get some concerns, some emails, but again, Pam and Janina and Denise's team. Um they've done a beautiful job uh to explain why and mostly when you explain to individuals and. Give reasoning, they're, they understand, so, yeah.
And the information to know where it is stopping and, oh, by the way, you do have a library here.
Yes, yeah.
To that Angela, they did do that, so that was part of when they ruled that out, they had that ability already prepared to say. When you are within this, this mile limit of a branch or a different library staff, so. Depending on where the individual wanted to go, her, her team was able to direct things to the destination. But I am happy that you were continuing with the senior housing and I'm especially happy to see that more beast. Addressed at different community centers, that's really.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work. Okay, does anybody else have any comments on the mobile library, that's exciting. Um, uh next is consent items, does anybody have any questions on the minutes or? As we're sent out, so we all agree on uh on the consent of saying the items are, the minutes are good, okay? Let's move on, we're gonna have a little discussion now on uh Erin brought up the youth pass library opportunity. And at this time, we're gonna have a little bit more discussion, uh Erin, do you wanna lead that or uh? Is he gonna be able to be on, I know he was having.
No, I'm here.
Okay, do you wanna lead that?
So.
A little bit more?
Uh I can, it might be, I mean, I was gonna let Randy probably take over, he probably has more information, he did, had a good presentation for us the other day.
Yeah. Okay, Randy.
Hi, everybody. So. So in, in line with um. Not necessarily acting on the facility, um master plan, because of course it hasn't, we haven't gotten the final one or, or uh. You, you guys haven't really studied it at all. But our, our lease agreement with, with them had, had not been finalized yet for, for this year and. So we just, we basically said, you know, this is, this is a library that we, we are thinking about doing some um. Kind of exciting ways to um increase, you know. Circulation and all that and it is one of our smaller libraries and. We have been um working with Cascade Fire District for. Well, ever since that library opened, there's been renovations to it, um that the library actually um did. And um. We just thought it would be a good time to, to reach out to them, um and it was actually prior to the. Facilities plan being quasi, you know, final, to ask if they would be interested in um us. Facilities plan being quasi, you know, final, to ask if they would be interested in um us purchasing that building. And.
They started also discussing with us the increase of the rent.
Yeah.
That's why we started thinking about that, and that's one of the facilities that we have. They're truly in good condition. We don't have a lot of issues there. It's one of the green ones, you know, that's how engineers determine that again. Uh, so, and uh, or should we?
Yeah, so over the next three years, we had actually um kind of negotiated an escalating. Rate amount, so currently, um currently it's about fifty cents a square foot. But prior to that, it was twenty-five cents a square foot. Well, you can't really touch that anywhere, not even.
How many square feet? About how much is that in the room?
It's about twenty-three, a little over twenty-three hundred square feet.
Okay, so about how much rent per year?
Um, right now, we're at about seventeen. So, um. In talking to them about timing on that, I said, you know, could we? Not take this up to what they had kind of figured was a market value on that, and they basically did that. I said, well, I have no idea. We really don't have anybody on staff. Do you have? Somebody that you work with there in your community? Um, that could. Look at some numbers for us, so they basically went out and looked at numbers on the post office as a public building, and there's another one, I can't remember it off the top of my head. But uh, he sent me back that information, and they both were over, a little over a dollar a square foot. And. So that's kind of where we settled for um. Couple of years from here, from now, we would be at a dollar's worth, but. And he was actually interested in doing a ten-year lease, which we've gotten some of those in the system. And um, we kind of got to a point. Where we thought we were gonna do that, and then we got thinking about, well, you know, would it, would it be advantageous for us to um? Make a reasonable offer, and also the, that building is limited in use to public use only. So they've got kind of a. Kind of a very small uh. Opportunity of having someone take that building and give them money, and. The gentleman who I've been working with up there said that. They love that library, and they have had no problem with us having a really cheap rent up there, and they worked with a volunteer fire department one hundred percent. But it's gotten to the point where the people aren't volunteering for stuff. As much, and it includes a fire department, so they were. Having to look at getting a full-time person and paying them a salary, and so they needed to be able to. Sustain that, and so that's where the conversation initially started with us talking about more rent dollars going to them.
So I want to go back to about when with the, and I know this was not a lease or anything you've done, this was just discussions. Let's see and figure it out, and you know, as I say, I like throwing everything on the table and then figuring out what's what I was planning. So um, you said about a ten-year lease, it was gonna escalate up to a um.
A dollar by, by twenty-five.
By twenty, so next year.
Or, I'm sorry, twenty-six, yeah. I just had done it with twenty-three, so I'm just stuck in twenty.
Basically, we were gonna stick with the fifty for this year, next year.
Yeah, seventy-five next year and then. Yeah.
Then it'd be thirty-seven basically for the next seven years.
Yeah. And, and that was what we had planned on doing.
I don't want to make it easy on myself.
Yeah, so we've actually um gone back to them. I, I sent them a slightly revised tenure, took the tenure out because. Um.
It's.
It. You know, if we're gonna.
Ten years, about two hundred thousand. These are rounded.
Right.
Well, please, no, this is not exact, that. Okay.
But the thing is also that when we brought it to internal affairs, just to also, we need to ensure that um. How we spend our taxpayers' money, right, and we need to, we are physically responsible, we are going to continue to do that. We wanted to bring this to the board as well, and to see that if it's okay with all of you for us to open this door and start discussing with them. Again, and see where we arrive. And that's what we wanted to bring to the board and see if it was okay for us to proceed with that. Again, it's. We, we don't know where it's going to take us.
Yeah.
Uh, but it also, we cannot enter in any negotiations without your consent, so.
And you're looking at all data, and I know you, I'm just going over data, stats, fair market value, what the building is. No samples and the problem of. And you'll be asking all those questions and doing that diligence to see.
Right.
If purchasing is really a once in a try.
Yes, and that's what we wanted to get your.
And we're just gonna take head nods, we're not gonna vote or anything, this is just something.
Uh, let me add one more piece of information that I neglected to tell you all. So, um. We. Had reached out to a realtor that has been working with the district for years. In fact, he helped us with Reed Polly um. And a couple of other libraries um to lock down ten-year leases years ago. And so we reached out to him and, and said, hey, could you help us look at U? And so he traveled up there and he says, you know. The outside of this building is a lot nicer than I thought it was gonna be based on the picture that I could.
It's a very nice building. It looks like an office there, but I'm totally.
And so I'm just mentioning that because we do have a professional and his staff um in the middle of this, and. And actually talking to the gentleman that I had been talking to. And um so. I just, I just wanted to mention that there is a professional, because I'm not a professional realtor by any stretch.
And you don't have the time.
Well. He's licensed. Uh, so that's, that's who we, we reached out to, to get uh somebody at that level to start talking with us and them about this.
And of course, it would uh go through all the inspections and make sure everything is sturdy and.
When it comes to inspection, actually, when we started our facilities master plan about a year ago, right? Um, they did that, and also you will see that also building conditions and all of that, and that's why U Pass Library. Was one of the, I think, the first ones when it comes to the condition. So I think that it's better than any inspection when you have professional engineers are going and looking at everything, and they have. Nothing to gain from it. They're just giving you objective information. So, yes.
But that, yeah, so everything will be out on the table, the forty.
Yeah.
Decisions.
Of course, that's why we wanted to bring it and see if, if it's okay. To enter and like to start conversations and negotiations, and then we'll come back.
We're not committed.
No, no, no.
But again, we cannot just go. But Randy and I cannot just go and do it without your, you know.
No, I, I, I'm interested to hear and see, and I think. Working at what, again, is the best for the community.
Yes.
And I think that the, you know, library is showing leadership and making sure we have a sustainability to give services to everybody.
Yes.
And it's, if it's to our advantage, especially in the long term, keeping the library sustainable, then we definitely want to explore the option.
And in the end, possibly a cost savings and then.
Yes, yes.
And then in order of services to.
Yes.
People.
Yeah, we, we just, we thought it was obviously time to bring you into this, like, you know, I'd reached out to a realtor, got some input from him, and. He's been in con- conversation with, but uh can't really go any further, you know, without the board being involved and.
There's a lot, there's still a long way to go.
Yeah, going. Saying, yes, go ahead and talk some more, and see, you know, what comes out of this, or no, we're not interested in this right now, and we can stop.
Thank you.
Erin, did we have any questions?
I mean, I, we've talked many times about, you know. Having more purchased property, having, owning more properties versus, you know, and then. When you look at that over time, it does a lot of time save us.
Yeah.
In the long run, so I'd be very interested to see what the. The outcome is.
So I guess uh we all, we are all in agreement that you guys continue the conversations and. Um, bring us more information as it comes available.
Thank you.
And then uh the next item is the uh decision item, and I think we have to read that aloud, don't we?
Yes.
I already knew I was gonna volunteer to read something. Perhaps not here, somebody else.
Okay, so we have a volunteer that's gonna lead it, and then we'll vote on it.
This one, right, okay, hold on.
Yeah.
Making sure I got the right. The Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees Resolution approving contracts and vendors. With projected twenty twenty-four activity greater than a hundred thousand dollars, attachment C, whereas. The financial guidelines dictate that the Board of Trustees must approve all contracts and purchases singularly. And in aggregate, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars annually, and whereas. Attachment C to this resolution includes the estimated purchase with a single vendor. That is in excess of one hundred thousand dollars during twenty twenty-four, and. Whereas the Board of Trustees legally approved the expenditures when they approved the twenty twenty-four budget. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Pike's Peak Library District that. The obligation included under attachment C to this resolution is approved for twenty twenty-four. For the purposes stated and at the specified amounts adopted this twenty-first day of August twenty twenty-four.
Could I um interject here just for just a second, because um Erin had actually had questions about the numbers on the back of the schedule.
I already emailed.
Oh, okay.
I have the answers, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, everything's been answered?
I believe, yeah.
Did email, so did you receive?
About a.
Yeah, the email was awesome. It totally cleared a lot of things up, so I appreciated that.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Justin. Justin actually provided that information to me right away. It was me that delayed sending out the information, so, but yeah.
Okay, well, I need a, a motion that uh to um. To pass this resolution. Can I hear motions?
The Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the resolution. Approving contracts and vendors with projected twenty twenty-four activity greater than a hundred thousand dollars.
Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Uh, any questions or remarks before we vote? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to approve the resolution, uh, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Uh, any, anything else good for the cause before we adjourn? Yes, uh, Laura?
I just wanted to mention that we have advertised that the September meeting would be at East Library. But due to the work that will be done in the parking lot, the September meeting has been moved to the Penrose side. The website has been updated, and any calendar invitations that anybody has, I believe I might have updated, if I didn't, I'll do it in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just another reminder, I think there was a little bit of confusion.
Right.
Um, with this meeting and that East meeting, so, well, uh, anyone else? Hearing none, adjourned at six twenty-four.